We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. Moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Jet Baer.
Here.
And for the first time, Jennifer Roberts. All right. Welcome.
Council, you have two offices to elect tonight from your membership, President and Vice President. That'll open the floor to nominations for President for the Pendleton Town Council for calendar year 2023.
Before we do that, I got something I'd like to let people know. I am not going to be the President or accept the nomination. And it's been one of my toughest years health-wise. And I think it's time for some younger people to come in and do some things. That being said, I will nominate Marissa Skaggs for President of the Council.
The nomination for Councilwoman Skaggs, or any other nominations for President? There are none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Marissa Skaggs, the Pendleton Town Council President 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, President Skaggs. Are there any nominations for the Office of Vice President for the year 2023?
I will nominate Shane Davis for Vice President.
Councilman Davis is nominated. Are there any other nominations for Vice President for 2023? None, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Shane Davis serving as Vice President 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, sir.
Before we move on, I do want to thank Chad for his stewardship and leadership for the last three years.
Thank you.
And shame to you for being Vice President now. So I guess I'm up now, right?
You're behind, my man.
Appointments, awards, and commissions, I feel like we should table that until we can meet cohesively as a group and figure that out. Now that we've just made officers. So, moving on, approval of minutes from prior meetings, the December 8th and December 12th meetings, minutes are in your Google Drive. Or I'm sorry, December 4th and December 8th.
I'm making a motion to approve both December meetings minutes.
You have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented for December 8th and 14th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, we have the clerk treasuries report.
Excuse me. We had a meeting on November 10th also.
Okay.
Minutes, I've got the minutes here that need to be accepted.
I don't think they were ready at the December meeting, if I remember correctly. Okay, upon review of those, I'm going to get a motion for acceptance.
I'll make that motion to accept the November minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor of accepting the November minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Willie, now you're up.
Okay, thank you very much. I think you've all seen the rest of your summary. We spent quite a bit of money, as we usually do, paid our bills. We had enough money to pay them. Also, the general fund is in good shape at 18520, 145. Any adjustments or anything to say more about that? One thing I wanted to bring up, the utility department and my office have collected money to help needy people pay their electric bills in the wintertime. To date, we received about forty four hundred and fifty dollars. We paid out thirteen hundred and fifty-four, so we still have a balance there. And hopefully we'll have a mild winter, help everybody we can.
Thank you much.
We have a motion to approve the claims the month of December as presented in Google Drive.
So moved.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the claims as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, department reports. Well, Chris is, was Chris on?
Online.
Awesome. Hi, Chris.
Hey, how are you? Congratulations, and I hope everybody had a great holidays and glad to see everybody there and welcome to Jim.
Thank you.
So, the report, we ended up the year with 2,292 total call for service reports for the fire department. Right now, we're at run number seventy-one for the month, so you can kind of get an idea of how busy we have been. All the new members have been sworn in. They've been working their respective shifts, covering both stations at Ingalls as well as in Pendleton. So today has been kind of one of them busy days. If you've been around town, you've heard sirens all day long leaving our station as well as Ingalls Station. So trying to get everything all squared away, moving forward. Talked to Zach Burline from Burline Construction. He is the person that's going to be doing the installation of the baby box. He has all the specifications that is needed for the installation of the baby box. He has to order some supplies, so ship date is still to be determined on when that will be installed. I've contacted the baby box founders and stuff, and Joe and his wife, and they're okay with everything because they understand that it's, you know, supplies and how long it's going to take to get some stuff in. And so they're okay with it. Once it gets installed, we'll have to do some rigorous training with it as well as we'll have to do some testing with the dispatch centers and the alarm company that we are going to be using is the same as the one that's installed at Edgewood Fire Department as well as the Elwood Fire Department. So the continuity of service as far as any type of alarms that go off, if a mother does surrender her baby, that the dispatch center is aware of it and can notify the authorities, whether it be the fire department or the police department, going forward. So, other than that, it's a short and sweet report. I will entertain any questions that you guys may have.
Gee, what was the total numbers for your runs in 2022?
Twenty-two ninety-two.
So far, first twelve days at this point?
Seventy-one.
Thank you.
Good evening. Beginning of the year, we're looking at new equipment. So I made note on the report to you that we've been discussing different types of duty pistols. We've met with IMPD firearms instructor Wes Owen. And because of the bigger departments, they can call the gun dealers and just get guns handed to them. So we were able to touch a bunch and shoot a bunch, and we have another batch coming to test, and so we're looking to see which pistol is going to be utilized by the Pendleton Police moving forward. I also like to make note in my report, anytime we use the training facility that you guys graciously let me have behind the PD, we did building clearing training. So you have to come up, Jim, anytime, come up and visit. And, but Greg Adams from the Sheriff's Department came down, he's on the SWAT team. We had an all-day training and it was awesome. And I have to say, Greg was nine years old when he rode with me the first time, and now he's training me. So it's amazing how that works. Officer Nathan Silva graduated from the academy. And he's back on shift on bike patrol, so I'm doing great. Wanted to point out that the Christmas party this year, the department nominated Officer Jerry Branson as the 2022 Officer of the Year. I try not to, like, praise the guys for, hey, you did so many traffic tickets, or, boy, you did wonderful riding traffic tickets, or arrests, or whatever. But Jerry Branson stood out because not only has he been helping in our IT department, just because he's an IT guru guru, but he's doing that on his own. But on the other hand, while doing that, he also got seventy-two DUI arrests for the year himself. So he's real good. And so I heard the discussion the other day, him and Silver were trying to see what they can get this year. So, and what's interesting is you see on TV, the officer is sitting across from a bar, watching the guy walk across the parking lot and get in a car. That is not what we do. In fact, if I find my men doing that, they're in trouble, because if they allow a drunk to stumble across the parking lot and get in a car and drive, they know they're in trouble. So these are all based on traffic stops, and again, you're more than welcome to come ride anytime. You ride with Jerry, you'll learn a lot. Besides duty pistols, we're also looking at upgrading some of our department rifles. We found a company that's based out of Columbus, Indiana, so that was pretty neat that we're going to buy them, Indiana-based Fostec rifles. Lucas reached out to them. They immediately drove up to us and laid out the pistol or the rifles, and we were able to negotiate a great price. For December, six hundred and eighty-one dispatch calls, twenty-nine criminal arrests. And for a quick year-end report, eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-four total dispatch calls, two thousand two hundred and sixty-six traffic stops. And then I also made this note of five thousand four hundred and ten patrol checks. And what that is, is that's the guys, anytime night shift, day shift, when they patrol the school, patrol the neighborhoods, patrol the businesses, they log back. And that just shows that number, my guys are out moving. And I think the larger part of that is a deterrent to crime, so. Yeah, offer is nonstop at night. He's currently on light duty. He was doing somersaults and broke his shoulder the other day. It has a little fracture, so. Yeah. So. Well, the best part of the story is he goes, it was the third one I did. So with that being said, it's a light, it's a small fracture, hairline, and he should be put back together in a couple of weeks. So, and they installed the new doors at the PD today. I was excited to have those done to up our security for the building, so that brought, that brought it. Going well. So, that's it.
Great. Any questions for you?
You choked up, Bertie.
Yeah, I looked at you and.
Talking to him lately.
Nat?
Yeah.
Has a pending doctor's appointment, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Spirit's word.
Yep. Yeah, he's wanting to come back. He's hungry for every time we talk to him.
Hope you can soon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, you.
Counsel? Not a lot, anything different except we're moved towards all the paperwork and all the shifting of the cases and that necessary paperwork that needed to be able to shut the court down, make the transfer to two different courts that we have. We're going to have some people from the state come out and walk through some of their records, make sure we understand exactly where and how it's supposed to be taken care of. That should be done shortly. Have been in contact with the state also, several different levels for that. Question? Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Good evening. I don't have much to add other than what's in my report. The patio behind the community building, they get poured in, they've sealed it once, so it's really good. If you guys haven't been back there, look at it, it's going to be a great addition to that building. The playground's moving along. They've got most of the sidewalks done, so you can kind of see the rough shape of what it's going to look like. Shade cell structure was set the other day. That's what the big arch is that you see. But, Matt, any questions for me?
I got, I got one.
Yes.
Do we have a engineer, company, person that is watching what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, context to put the plane together. They're also coming up doing site visits.
I just said that.
Tear some concrete up, yep.
Right, right.
Yep. They had some trouble with their forms and the radiuses weren't right, so when
That's fine.
things got put back together, they wouldn't work, so.
In 2023, are we going to start surveying areas for the new zip line?
We're still scouting out potential places for the zip line, yes.
You load up in our attic, right?
I'm very interested.
This could be the year of the zip line.
It could be the year. This could be Steve's year.
One more question.
Yes.
I've had a couple of people ask me if it's all right to go out and walk the golf course in the bad weather and everything, and members.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, they can be out there walking.
They just want to walk for exercise, not play.
Yep, not a problem at all.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for Aaron?
Thank you.
Department?
All right, so you have our year-end totals for our building permit summaries there. If you have any questions on that, let me know. I'm not too much to report other than what I have in there. The building condemnation for 116 through 120, the building owner was able to get one of the buildings open, 120 West Street, which is the H&R Block. He was able to meet all of our structural and fire standards that we needed to lift the unsafe building condemnation from that particular building. So he's going to keep continuing to work and get the other one open. Rezones, we do have one on the agenda tonight, so we'll get into that a little bit later, and we have one that was tabled as well. And let's see, our community crossings, 2022, second round, the town was awarded about three hundred thousand dollars. So that must be spent within the next year and a half. And I think, or so I think you went and got that with Denise. I think it was like December 6th or something, so really glad that we got that. That's all I've got. Questions? Excellent. My manager?
All right, first is on major activities. So review of customer notification for continuous flow. Sounds verbose. What it is, is our software for our metering notifies us a list of people who have had continuous flow, and that indicates a leak somewhere. Usually if there's something wrong with plumbing and it could shut down and then maybe start up again, like a hose left on overnight would not show up. We reviewed that process. The software is dependent on the electronic device in each meter pit, and it's set in the factory for seven days. So we looked at reviewing, trying to reduce that. We're not able to do it unless we go through the ridiculously long process of opening every meter and doing that. So we decided to keep it at seven meters. This became an issue because of the hard freeze that we had, which so stark, so fast. You can imagine a lot of people had problems with their water. Tracy's been wonderful about watching that and notifying people, and she's figured out a way to upper game even more. We don't tell people you have a leak. We have to tell them that they have a continuous flow. We do it by email if they, we do have their email, and then she will also do phone calls if we don't have her. So if you have any questions about that, let me know. We did the, part of the paving project was to, we did the final walkthrough this week and looked at the culvert, which was very well done. If you haven't driven past it, however, the hard freeze indicated, showed, it revealed that we have some very bad asphalt by the railroad tracks. We think what happened is something got mixed in with the asphalt. In fact, if you, there's a picture, scroll to the picture. That's the culvert, our new culvert. But you could see that one hole just popped up, and that's brand-new asphalt. That's supposed to be two inches thick, a new asphalt, and it's probably a quarter inch thick. We think of, I called it the hairball, but basically a ball of sand somehow got into the mix. So you're going to see that probably all milled out, and once it gets warm, they'll mill it out and repaint that, that area. There's some other problems, but you wouldn't be able to see it.
Them other problems, excuse me.
Then you mentioned. Right. Okay. Yeah.
It's, push gets it, it sinks, right.
Yeah.
For a brand-new road, looks bad.
Yeah, some of that you can't get away with, because that's just
Right.
what's underneath. We go back to the laundry list there. The new light post banners are up, if you haven't noticed. Our placemaking committee selected those, and they're in, and our electric department has already put them up. And then also the placemaking committee, if you look behind us, the etchings, and if you look underneath, there's some new lighting. And it's, you know, set for the nineteen twenties look, and I, just that simple thing, I think is just really enhanced the look of the town hall from the outside and even from the inside. And then with that, they've also created the window display program where nonprofits can come in and for that month, they display something. And it's not for commercial purposes, it's for historic, artistic, you know, community quality of life enhancement things. And then South Madison Community Foundation has a group that is looking for other ways to make the town have, look better and have enhanced quality of life. And we decided to invest in some, asked us the town to invest in some flower planters, because if you don't know the watering system for the plants that hate from the lights, it is failing, and it's, some of that is embedded in concrete, and so we're going to try this for a few years, see how it works. Hopefully, all the, all the shop owners and town hall, we all will probably get a plant in front of our building, and we need to water it. So it'll be a community-wide project. And oddly enough, when Steve brought his photo of what he was doing to his restaurant bar, lo and behold, this hundred-year-old photo was a planner, a planner that would just like basically what we decided to pick, so that was sort of, I thought that was pretty. So with that, any questions?
No questions, thanks. All right, the first order on old business is the surplus utility fund ordinance 22-43. We had our first read on this at the December 8th meeting. Basically allowing the clerk treasuries office to transfer surplus utility funds to a identified account. Is that, did I summarize that right, Willie?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just simply the second reading of that ordinance. There have been no changes since December. I'll entertain a motion to approve, once you break that.
I'm making a motion to approve one of those 22-43.
You have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor of ordinance 22-43 surplus utility form, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, new business, dispatch center representation and unit task law. And Chad, I'm going to defer to you on this. You've been more involved than the rest of us.
What this is, Chief Forrest, in one of the meetings, two mayors, I said two mayors, Elwood, Lepel, Vice President, and the fire chief and the police chief from Elec and Elwood. We've met three times now. And what this is, I got with Jeff after the first meeting, the dispatch center, Allison Anderson, threw a bunch of changes with the new building and everything and so forth. But lo and behold, they've come up with a new contract for all the channels fire departments and everything. Law that you see there is a lawyer company. Is that the right word? Firm? They're representing the towns and the fire departments, because now I'm going to ask Chief Far and if I'm out of line, Russell, you can tell me. Chief Far and Chief Nodine need to head up Ingalls, Markville, the more people we get into this, the less it's going to cost each town city. Task law firm is, it's a fifty thousand dollar, right now, it's ten thousand dollars for the town of Pendleton, because you're just five of us. Five towns and communities, so we need to Okay, yeah, ten thousand dollars, a lot of money. Last year, first of all, Elwood and Elec paid zero. They would not pay because they didn't have a contract. Right here. The town of Pendleton paid because of what we agreed to previous years, eighty thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and some change. Under the new contract for 2023 through 2026, they increased the town of Pendleton to a hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars, plus sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and five dollars for South Madison Fire Territory. So it's two hundred and nineteen thousand five forty-eight total for each year. And that's went up from eighty thousand and change without any input from any of the towns. So there, there's a war, okay? I'll be honest. It's wrong, what's happening. Task firm finally got a engagement letter to us, and Mayor Jones out of Elwood, yeah, he's one that's leading the charge on this. He sent this engagement letter to all of us. I give it to Jeff to make sure it's, it's okay. He's went through it, everything's okay. So what we need to do is give Marissa, when it's changed names, Marissa, on the letter, but give her the authorization as counsel to spend that money to find out why we're paying with the fire department. It's a sixty-three percent difference, which is ridiculous, but no input. Any questions?
Okay, to be clear, we have not opted in thus far to this tact agreement, correct?
No.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make that distinction that we, we have done nothing thus far.
No.
Okay.
Other than them being at the meeting and explaining what they're going to do and that like.
Right. Okay, and this all started back in December or January of 2022, is when they, the original proposed Madison County interlocal agreement for decision dispatch started, correct? And at this contract.
I don't know what the difference.
That was when the contract was sunset, was December 31st of 2021, yes.
Okay, but the proposed interlocal agreement that we have is really proposed to go from 2023 to 2026, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The other interesting thing is when they submitted paperwork saying, hey, you need to pay this, it was after every town in the county had already voted on the budgets for the next year. So it's like, you're three months behind already, and you're telling us we have to come up with this money. That wasn't an option, people.
Picking back off that plate, I think you've
General Lake is the transfer from Lepel.
He made the comment, one of the meetings, the second meeting, that what they increased in the panel was twenty-three percent was twenty-three percent of their total budget for the town. But they had no input. So it's been kind of interesting. But, uh, I personally think we need to do sign an engagement letter with the other towns and I think we need, we chiefs need to push the fire territories and the police departments to push their campaigns to get in on this. More people, less, everybody's got a big increase without any input.
I know Chief person that I had reached out to all the police agencies a year and a half. So I don't know if they're ready for my presentation, contact, I'll give you this.
Okay. Okay.
So have we been working off of the contract, the original contract that expired in twenty twenty-one? Is that, who died in this? So we continue to pay a good faith with the expired contract?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that contract? That, where's that at?
The twenty-one?
Yeah, the one that expired, the one that, it was like ten years ago, right?
Chris, are you still on there?
Yes, I have, I'd have to go through and see if I can find it because that was signed probably when Chief Gardner was in the office. Um, I'd have to go back and look through all the files to see if it is in there, but that is correct, Steve, that once it sunset, they agreed, the council and the commissioners and the dispatch director all agreed that the, the, the amount that all the fire departments were going to pay, were going to remain the same for the years. Um, but the contract was not valid, I guess.
Okay.
And for, and for us, as, as the fire department, even going forward, the fire department has always paid the dispatch fees. The biggest thing now is that they are obviously increasing it and yeah, I don't agree with it, but I get it. But they're also charging the police departments now, which they have never charged the police departments um, ever since I was a dispatch back in ninety-one, ninety-two.
The other interesting part that at the time that the feds made us consolidate our dispatch, Elec and Elwood had a dispatch. So they had to give theirs up. Uh, Pendleton, we had our own frequency, we still had a dispatch. So we had to actually give up our frequency to play nice with the team. Elwood and Elec, their dispatchers went down to dispatch center. And there was an agreement that those two cities would pay dispatch a sum of money. And they contractually did that for several years to keep those people employed in the dispatch staff. The contract ran out and Madison County Dispatch never, they never looked at that amount coming in and adjusted their budget for it. So all of a sudden, they wake up one day and they didn't get their check from Elwood and Elec. They called them and they said, our contracts. And that's when this kind of blew down. And like I said, Chris said, we've never, at least don't, we've never paid for this.
And we keep saying day, are we talking about the county commissioners?
Well, it's, it's, it's your, it's your Madison County Dispatch Board. This, this came down from, from the director of the dispatch and then labor, the whole group of dispatch.
Labor report to the county commission.
Yes. But Elec and Elwood have definitely been involved way more than us because of their contractual agreements. And then it's now true that. Interesting, the, the biggest thing for us, there was no argument because they came up with this, hey, you need to pay this. But we already set our budget for that year. No way that can happen. And that's just been out of student fact.
Mark, did I hear that Chesterfield pulled out of this?
I have nothing.
They did.
They did.
I don't want you to pull that. Their council voted no. On, uh, engagement, but which I personally think is terrible. Chesterfields. To have a Chesterfields up to ninety thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Tell me what is it? What part of territory?
East Madison.
Yeah, East Madison, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Bunch of money. Bunch of money.
I went through the interlokal agreement, um, like the assessment formula and I can't get, using their own numbers, I can't get this to come out quite the same. I mean, it's not off by a whole lot, but a little bit. And I guess my question is like this figure that they have in here because it's based off of the number of dispatched runs. Is that, are those calls originating in that area or does that include mutual aid calls?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It's, it's if, if Pendleton, if my fire department gets dispatched to the city of Anderson, that is a call for service.
Right.
That is a, that is a, that is a charge to my department as far as that fee goes, yes.
Okay. So it's not like a true run count then? Because you're
Correct.
Agencies reporting to a single incident, correct?
Well, it's, it's the first call. So if we host the incident, yeah, if, if we host the incident, we get the bill.
Okay, that, that was a question. Sorry.
Yeah. Thank you. No, that's fine.
Any other comments or questions on this?
Make sure that I understand this and everybody else understands it. This agreement with TAP and, uh, their law firm was part of Kyle Hopper, I think. This is to represent us and try to negotiate us a better deal. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, this is, uh, and I have to be very careful. As you guys know, I represent the Madison County Board of Commissioners, Elwood and and, and us.
Why help us out here?
Yeah. The, uh, the contract is a pre-litigation contract. It would be to try to negotiate this deal with the county's attorney of the special counsel, but the maiden on that side too, to try to work this out. I don't think, I think it's fair to say that all the sides want to avoid a corporate one, I think. But, uh, but that's the idea is to negotiate a deal with, uh, with the county that works for the county, works for everybody. So the public safety isn't affected.
What, what is, is there a way to save taxpayer money and have the group to send this bill? Maybe have a meeting and say, hey, we need to talk about bills instead of the way it was done, save a template. Seems simple, I'm kind of Southern Indian on the sense.
I think there's been numerous, we'll call them meetings. What's the police chief of Elec?
Uh, Chief McGovern.
Elwood.
President.
President. He, he's very informed on this.
Yeah, he was on our, he was our police dispatch liaison.
Right, right. And you said in the meeting very long, gee, he'll, he'll, he'll let you know a lot of things that's going on that they don't, in my opinion. And Jeff has to be careful, just like he said, he had to reclusive himself in this. But there, there's some things that need to be answered, okay? Not just why this money was decided, but taking back off what Marissa said, you look through this and do the numbers, they don't come up. They just don't come up right. And to sit down, uh, there's been numerous downs and somebody else quits on the dispatch board, somebody else comes in, so. Don't risk it, ten thousand dollars, a lot of money, but so is two hundred and forty thousand. So that's, that's great.
The only concern that I have at this point, I mean, this is, I kind of like I'm picking up in the third quarter of a basketball game on this, but, um, you know, this letter of intent signature page has one, two, three, four, five, six entities. We know that one of them has dropped, so now we're out of five entities. It makes sense a little bit when you're frustrated about paying, you know, two hundred thousand dollars in dispatch fees to take the bet on ten thousand dollars to try to negotiate something. However, I get concerned when I see one signature on here and I'm not exactly sure if more of these people are going to drop and that fifty thousand dollars is going to get divided fewer and fewer ways. I, I feel like maybe, this was dated December twenty-eighth. I feel like, and I'm not telling the council how to feel about this, but I would prefer to just pause for just a second and investigate to see who else has entered into this in the last couple of days. I mean, is that fair to?
That's what I was wondering too, who else has said no? I've seen, they're definitely not.
Chesterfield's the only one, okay, that I'm aware of. The reason why there was only one name on there. Mayor Jones got this from TAP firm and he immediately sent it out.
Right.
You know, that's when I got it, okay, asking us to sign it. And it's like I sent it back to him. We can't, I can't sign that until the council agrees, same way with the other towns. I, we can call Mayor Joe.
Yeah.
And find out who else or where is it, but.
The other piece of the puzzle, and I understand that the fire territory has its own governing board. But as the provider unit, I feel like the fire territory and the town need to be somewhat united, whichever way they decide to go so that we're not creating unnecessary friction between the two entities right out of the gate. And that's just me saying that, that's not anybody else saying that. But that's kind of how I feel at this juncture, I guess. I just think there's a lot of questions that I need to nail down before we enter into a contract that could be up to twenty-five thousand dollars versus ten thousand dollars.
Chat, just, just so I'm clear, because I've not heard any of the numbers of what our dispatch fee was going to be going up to from the eighty-seven thousand dollars. What did you say ours was going to be going up to with this, if this proposal goes through?
Just the fire department, shouldn't say the fire department.
Sixty-nine, four oh five, right, Chad?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and five dollars and twelve cents, Chris.
So, so it actually would go down?
Oh, because they're breaking you out of the towns.
Correct. But see, I already, I already paid anyways, I paid, yeah.
Is there just cutting the apple a different way?
Correct, correct.
And then, yeah, police department's going from nothing to
Yeah, and that's the big hit is the police department going from, you know, and the town, you know, it's all in the same pot as far as the town goes, but the police department has never paid for it. Now you get this big hit that was not expected, which I completely agree with everybody that's saying on this.
What's, what's the, uh, role model when I look to where we need to publish, they have a special meeting, forty hours. Forty-eight hours, so we talked about, we're going to have to have a special.
For the preparation for that, right?
Yes, yes. It has to be ten days, ten days. So that gives us ten days plus to get with Mayor Jones, the amount we're going to talk to, and I'll do it with you and we'll find out what kind of
Yeah, I just have some questions here.
I, I, I don't think I'm sleeping out of place. Reach out to TAP.
Okay.
That, that's your person.
Okay.
President Mayor Jones is a good man and there are good people on the county side too, but, um, he'll be your attorney.
Right.
Or that firm.
For this, yeah.
And I found them very responsive, but you try to reach out to them.
You remember his name.
That's the first versus last name.
No, Kyle, I know, but there was over the time he brought to the meeting, which, um, I, I don't know who he thought it was.
Okay, so we need a motion to continue, Jeff?
You can, you can invite a motion to table the, the consideration of the TAP contract.
Okay, do we have a motion to continue the consideration of the TAP contract?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor of tabling? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion table. Okay, next thing, uh, new business twenty-three oh one, renaming a portion of Laurel Street to West Street. Um, you all have a photo in your drive. This is, correct me if I'm wrong, Hannah, this is from earlier, yeah, with the addition of Arabian Point at the corner of Tile and May, they're continuing West Street to meet Laurel.
Yes. So historically, um, in a lot of old maps, West Street continues all the way down to where Laurel goes east-west. Um, for some reason Laurel is from Tile, it, it wraps around, which is not usually how roads go. Um, each corner has a different name. So with Kyle Smith's, um, development going in there, we can kind of notice that because now there's houses that are going to be named along that street instead of it being Laurel and being more confusing for, uh, emergency services. It should just be changed back to West Street and it practically winds up with West Street anyway. So I'm not sure when it changed to Laurel, no one in the county seems to know either, so. It's Google official, so. Okay. So, yeah, that's basically, and like, there's a graphic in there that shows you exactly where that chunk will be. There's no addresses on it. Um, there are two driveway cuts that just lead to garages.
No current address.
Yeah. Yeah, but well, yeah, no current addresses, but we'll have Kyle Smith's addresses on there as West Street.
Problems, questions, concerns? All right, I'll entertain a motion for ordinance twenty-three oh one, renaming a portion of Laurel to West.
So moved.
You have a motion, you have a second?
I'll say.
All right. All in favor of renaming a portion of Laurel Street to West Street, seeing how I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The rules. Do we need, do we get some, or can we wait?
Um, I mean, it, the, the county is already moving on it.
So we should go ahead?
We need to.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
I'm making motions to suspend the rules and have a secondary.
There's nobody living there right now, so it doesn't.
No, there's no address, no, no.
Well, they've been assigned.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, have a second, suspend these.
Okay.
All in favor of suspending the rules, can you roll, roll call vote for this?
Sure.
To prove it to me, it's, okay. Willie, can you roll call vote, please?
Sure. Chip Van.
Yes.
Jane Davis.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Marissa Skae.
I, hey, motion, uh, to suspend the rules is carried, so we can entertain a motion for a second reading or approval for the second reading of twenty-three oh one, renaming a portion of Laurel to West. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
All in favor of renaming a portion of Laurel to West, seeing how I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, second reading. Is that all we do, Jeff? I did it, right?
Okay.
Yes, I'm for.
All right, awesome. Um, moving on, twenty-three oh two, admitting the zone map. We're planning commission decision from the January fourth meeting.
And so this is for property on Angle Road, right below Pizza King and My Time Fitness. Uh, it's been vacant for a while, it was a church, so it's zoned institutional for that church use. And the planning commission gave it a favorable recommendation to rezone to general business. The owner would like to put some small business in that church building. It will have to fit within the permitted uses for general business and she's aware that, um, depending on the engineer, the state engineer specification on the building, you might have to get a state designer lease, you might not. Uh, just depends on what you have to put in there.
Any questions for Hannah regarding that change? Now entertain a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm making a motion to approve twenty-three day show, Chip.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Right.
All in favor of twenty-three oh two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, the planning commission counted as the first read, correct?
Correct.
This is the second, so.
You have adopted, the council's adopted that by that.
Perfect, okay. Anybody from the public have any comments?
So, so new business, we need to talk about the twenty twenty-three appropriations for after.
Okay.
So you, you need to set a
Yep, I'm in the
Can they, yeah, well, no, you have to have a special meeting.
Okay.
You probably need to do it sooner or later because some of the invoices start coming in. We only appropriated twenty-two.
Okay.
And I'd like to get approval of that, two projects. Salt Barn and then two
Salt Barn and then two Bobcat Gators to replace. Fairly new gator that we bought that's turned into eleven, um, and. The guys from the barn came and talked to me during the cold snap, and said they wanted heated cabs, so they're a little bit more expensive and. It's plenty blow, how do you fight that? And they want one of them to be attached, be able to attach in, including the snow pile, cause you know. Liability reasons we have picked up, cleaning the sidewalks in the downtown area, and so I'd like to add those two. Of projects. We're gonna, we're gonna sell a fairly new gator, that money. To offset some of the costs.
It's not really that big of a one.
Yeah, well, it's green. No, it's been awful, it's been, it's not more than it's been on.
Aaron, you want bud?
I saw the one you optioned off. Okay, so this is project nine and ten, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, ten and eleven.
Nine, ten, eleven, eight, nine.
Nine and nine was the. The grab, the extra twenty-five.
Yes, ten and eleven.
Show me a number that is appropriate, let's just say. Right, yes, sir.
Okay. So you just approve those or reuse, just set a public?
Set a public hearing date.
Okay.
There has to be ten days of, after it's published in the newspapers, so you're looking at least, at least two weeks.
Yep.
All right, we want Stephanie to coordinate that.
Yeah.
I remember that the motion we made after meetings on the second Thursday of each month at six o'clock.
Okay, we actually have the scheduled meetings for all of the things, should be approved.
We're driven only together, it is the medical.
Okay, so we need a motion to set the twenty-twenty-three meeting time as the second Thursday of every month at six P M at town hall.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. The motion is a second, all in favor of adopting the second Thursday of the month at six P M. At town hall as our meeting time for twenty-twenty-three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, we will see you all second Thursday of the month at six P M at town hall, do we need to suspend the rules? No, that's just a resolution, okay, perfect, okay, now do we have any public comment? Yeah.
I have a question about dispatching. You have several numbers. Dispatches they have to do each year.
The numbers that are in their agreements or the planned agreement that they submitted in January of twenty-twenty-two. Was based off of, I believe, twenty-sixteen's numbers. Were an average between twenty-sixteen and twenty-twenty's numbers, or there's, there's a reference to it.
Question about why twenty sixteen?
Well, my question is. So. But that is the number of dispatches they make. Sounds like it might get off to competition.
Yeah.
Well, the federal government only loves.
Per county.
Per county.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm impressed.
Well, the variable is the nine-one-one C on your phone, that's what they are starting. I don't know, you know what it is right now?
No, but it changed with people with home phones, cell phones.
Yeah, so I will tell you this, Madison County has been notoriously low, and achieving. Hurting themselves drastically compared to.
The other issue was the microphones that came from now with the Dell, without them on there being ready. All of a sudden, where did that find you?
So we'll be on a fact finding mission over the next couple of weeks to iron out some of the stuff that are first of all being tapped, ask them their take on it, so.
There hasn't been a filing yet, and that's my fault, my head litigation guy, uh, was sick the entire month of December, so I throw that some stuff there. But it's, it's true, um, it's imminent, will be filed, Bob, I understand that you've talked to an attorney.
I spoke with Max Howard, that was just our.
That's the coordination, coordination with, with the affected property owners like yourself, it's gonna be important to litigation. So I'm not, I'm not telling you to hire an attorney, um, but if you do, we, we, if you could let me know or the town know. So we could coordinate with that person, uh, I think it would help, um, that could be after the filing of the, of the lawsuit, but ultimately. You know, the damages that were incurred were incurred by you and your fellow business owners, and so that. And you've already provided us with some evidence of that, which is very helpful, um, but, uh, it's gonna be a, uh. We'll wanna make sure your interests are covered as well as the tenants.
I've just been working.
And I, we've received other lists from other owners, that this was back twenty-twenty-one. It's been a while, but it's gonna be, you know, we want, we want everyone made whole, obviously, because the, these folks were our, the town's agents. And, uh, the work that they did, we wanna make sure people are, are taken care of.
So. If, uh. List was made in way, is it town?
No, no, the lists, lists were provided in terms of, uh. We asked back in twenty-twenty-one, I, I think you received the copy, it was, uh, please tell us what went wrong. Send, send us what you got, send pictures, send receipts, what, you know, repair costs, things like that, we have that. That, and that's an excellent start, that allows us to get this done. That's not a bad idea, I mean, you, you wanna have your own, there, 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 there are two different sides to this thing, now we hope we can work together. But by the same token, you are the ones that suffered the damages. But if, if before that happened, if, if that person could call me, I think it would be helpful for both sides.
I know. Contract. Paid in full, so it went on. And the DAS signed off of contract that we were required to do. None of them signed off saying, yes, we're happy with it. To me, there's been three years plus here, nothing's happened.
Absolutely, in the town, uh, the council authorized us to go forward in November. I would, I fully planned on having something filed last year, but it'll be filed. I will be sitting here at the next meeting, uh, saying it hasn't been filed or I just won't show up.
Any other public comments? Hey, anything else from the council? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second for adjournment? All in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion for meeting adjourn, thank you.